2013 meeting in order, if you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Shields?
Here.
Simpson?
Here.
Coin?
Here.
Hilbert?
Here.
Colasar?
Here.
Lamb?
Here.
Rose?
Here. Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the May 28, 2013 regular meeting as prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President, I'm going to abstain because I wasn't at the last meeting.
Any further discussion? For the clerk, please call the roll.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Abstain.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes, six yeas, one abstention.
Reports of standing committees for the Finance Committee we met prior to the council meeting, and our next meeting is two weeks from today, Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President, no report and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. President, Public Properties will meet this Wednesday, June 12th, at 5:00 PM in the multipurpose room.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President, nothing to report, but I am going to try to schedule a meeting sometime in the next month or so on public art, public art display.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President, Streets and Sidewalks will meet this Wednesday also immediately following Public Properties meeting, which is approximately 5:30.
Thank you. Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colasar?
Thank you, Mr. President, no meeting scheduled, but we do have numerous items on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for Finance and one for Special Legislation. For the Finance Committee, we have 13-108, fund transfer for the water funds, 13-109, budget amendments, 13-110, fund advance Lafayette and Ryan Road intersection, 13-111, adopt the new iPad and cellphone policy, 13-112, adopt tax budget, 13-113, NAB sculpture discussion, and 13-114, use of summer youth program. Special Legislation Committee, we have one, addendum to 12-135, public art ordinance, report of municipal officers. Mayor Hanwell?
Thank you, Mr. President, just two reminders for the public that the customers can sign up for automatic payment from their bank accounts to avoid late fees and mail charges. The ACH, Automatic Clearinghouse is what it's called, and the application forms are available at the Finance window. Online bill paying, customers who would rather not provide their bank account information can also pay by credit card, there's a link right off the city main page so that people can sign up for that. I attended this past Saturday, the farmer's market, which combined with the Pizza Palooza, first Pizza Palooza on Public Square, which was a great success, and I'd just like to mention that the Main Street Medina took over the farmer's market and is doing more to have the farmer's market work in conjunction with other activities at the same time, which helps draw larger crowds to the downtown, and this Pizza Palooza helped raise funds for Feeding Medina County, Main Street Medina, and the AARP. The band concert this past Friday on June 7th was canceled due to the inclement weather, so the first concert will be this coming Friday at June 14th at 8:30. There's no charge, and the public's encouraged to attend to support our Medina Community Band. They will also have a recognition of Flag Day, which is that same day, June 14th, and the concerts start at 8:30 PM. And last, but certainly not least, Main Street Medina was awarded Force State of Ohio Preservation Awards at the Annual Heritage Ohio Preservation Conference held on Columbus. They received Best Organization Committee Project, which was for the Main Street governing documents, Best Marketing Project for the Medina Holiday Spectacular and District Lighting, which Council was a part of, The Spirit of Main Street, which Board Director Ed Wright received, and the Ohio Main Street Manager of the Year, Matt Weiderholt, is the Executive Director of Main Street Medina, received, and I'd like to invite Matt up and present him with a proclamation for that award. City and Medina Proclamation, whereas the purpose of Ohio Main Street Program is to improve all aspects of the downtown through improving economic development, increasing and strengthening public participation and involvement, as well as making the downtown a fun place to visit, and whereas Main Street Medina, established in 2007, has worked hard to continue to foster the preservation and revitalization of the nine-block historic district through a wide variety of activities and events supporting economic growth and revitalization, whereas the City of Medina has benefited greatly because of the dedication and hard work of Matt Weiderholt, Executive Director of Main Street Medina, who continually strives to improve the historic district, and whereas Matt Weiderholt was named Main Street Manager of the Year in the State of Ohio out of 20 Main Street program managers, and is highly regarded by Heritage Ohio for his tremendous success over the past five years, most notably in 2012. Now therefore, I, Dennis Hanwell, Mayor of the City of Medina, do hereby commend and recognize Matt Weiderholt for his hard work and dedication to our community, and witness whereof, I have hereby set my hand and cause a seal of the City of Medina to be affixed here too, this 10th day of June 2013. Congratulations, Matt.
Thank you very much. I very much appreciate the award, but certainly it is a team effort, and it takes a group to do all this, and without the partnership of the city and the support of the city and the leadership and all of the volunteers and members and everyone within the district, we really would not be here today. So thank you very much, I appreciate this, and we hope to continue doing great things in the city.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, and I think on behalf of council, I can say we're proud to continue to support Main Street Medina as we have in the past, and I believe the work done at Main Street Medina has been great for the city, and kudos to everybody on the board and to you, Matt, good job. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President, a few things tonight, the bond sale was completed last week, this was, of course, as you know, to refinance the Build America Bonds that were issued during 2010. The federal government had promised to reimburse 35% of the interest on those bonds, and a payment from them was supposed to be made on June 1st of $130,000, they chose not to make the payment, because they're the federal government, so they can do that, so they only made part of it at 118. The city had protected ourselves from this possibility with a clause in the bonds that allowed us to call them from the owners at par and refinance them if the federal government failed to make the full reimbursement. The fact that they didn't activated that clause, and we chose to refinance. The BABS, Build America Bonds, who are outstanding, had rates ranging from 1.85% up to 6 1/8%, the new bonds have rates ranging from 0.608% to 3 1/2%. This represents a significant savings, the City Medina saved at least $1.4 million over the remaining 18 years of the term of the bonds. Savings available due to current market conditions and the City Medina's excellent credit rating. I'd like to thank council and the mayor for their cooperation and assistance, both in approving this refinancing issue and also in working with me to achieve the excellent credit rating that helps make this possible. Also, Mr. President, I will be out of the office for a few days this week, the Ohio Association of Public Treasurers has asked me to teach a class, so tomorrow I will be speaking at their Ohio Public Finance Officers Training Institute on Budgeting and Long Range Financial Planning, and I'm also serving as a volunteer consultant at the American Legion Buckeye Boy State Program this week. Couple of things on the agenda later that originated with finance, and we'll get to those when we get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Bear Duti, please chief.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report.
Thank you. Ms. Rice, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, just one item, the next City of Medina Economic Development Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July 2nd, at 7:45 AM here at City Hall. The Economic Development Committee, along with other invited community stakeholders, will be the core group of individuals to form the Downtown Strategic Plan Steering Committee. We will be discussing the need for a downtown plan, preliminary goals of the efforts, status of current redevelopment efforts, and a draft scope of work for the strategic endeavor. I believe I did include all of council on the invite and encourage all of you to attend if your schedule permits, and that's my report.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President, this Friday and Saturday, you'll see an increase of a lot of fire vehicles around town. We're hosting the Medina County Emergency Services Conference in cooperation with the high school. This conference is for fire UMS personnel throughout the county and actually the region. There'll be national-level speakers and multiple hands-on classes, and we're anticipating we'll bring in over 150 emergency service people for the weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, just a couple announcements, the MCRC is happy to announce another year of summer camp is upon us. Our first week started today, and there are 10 more weeks to register your kids for these fantastic themed weeks of summer camp. Every week is a different field trip, which includes fun things like the Nautica Queen, the Cleveland Aquarium, Cleveland Zoo, Rainforest, History Museum, horseback riding, and Kalahari with much more. We have discounts for families with multiple children, and you can see all of our summer camp activities on our website at www.madinarec.org, by downloading our brochure or visiting our facility and talking with our great front desk staff. This Saturday, June 15th, on the Medina Square, from 10:00 AM to noon, is the American Heart Association Heart Chase Event. Heart Chase provides a fun new way to promote healthy living and supports a great cause. It's like the Amazing Race meets the minute to win it, grab your family, friends, and coworkers of all ages and uncover clues, solve puzzles, and complete challenges in a race to the finish line. Each team must have a smartphone to play, and you can register online at www heartchase.org under the City of Medina event. And lastly, our next scheduled devised meeting at the Rec Center is Thursday, June 20th, at 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vogel, Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President, the season to re-roof is in full swing here in Medina. Tonight, I would like to share my experience talking roofers out on the job sites recently. Roofers are telling me that when they tear off the old roofs here that were installed before permits were required, they are encountering previous installations that have a lack of venting, rotted wood, and no underlayment or ice and water protection, all the things a professional roofer should include when doing a good job. Now that we require permits for re-roofs, those problems are disappearing. The fact that a permit, registration, and inspection are now required has virtually ensured a better job than was done before these permits were required. This idea is not limited to re-roof permits. All building projects can benefit from a permit in this way. So homeowners, please come see us when doing that home improvement project. If the roofers are right, you are bound to get a better job in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Han, Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, two brief notes, the first is that our next boards and commissions will be this Thursday, June 13th. Historic Preservation Board will be at 5:00 PM, and Planning Commission will be at 6:00 PM. Additionally, the city is continuing to administer the US EPA Brownfield Coalition Grant Program to aid the redevelopment of vacant commercial and industrial facilities. Upcoming activities include Phase II environmental sampling at the Greater Medina Chamber Site, South Estuary Collision Center, and the former Bennett Lumber Facility, and the Farmers Exchange Facility. Please feel free to contact the Community Development Department at 722-9023 with any questions, or if you know of potential sites in need of assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President, our West Smith Road project keeps marching on, we're nearly complete with the water main installation, and the next week or two, we'll be starting the transfer for each of our water customers from the old line to the new line, we'll of course work with each of those individually as far as scheduling and impact. Also want to advise all travelers in that area, the last week of this month is tentatively scheduled to be the week when the railroad will be replacing the dual rail crossing that's at the eastern end of our project. When this happens, for a period of five days, our traffic detour will change. Once those dates are solidified, we will be notifying not only all the stakeholders in the project area, but all the traveling public as well. And lastly, this afternoon, border control awarded a project for our Mill Street curbs, that project will get underway here in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, we're asking the public for their patience and understanding as we go forward with repair of the asphalt streets throughout the city. The repairs will target the more degraded areas of pavement. Additionally, within a week, we propose to chip and seal fair road, it's a long-waited project, appreciate the spearheading of President Coin and the assistance of Pat Patton, City Engineer, the city will be served great by this, chip and seals, well as the fairgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Notes as communications and petitions, none, unfinished business, none. Introduction of visitors, members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted, oh, well, sorry about that. Confirmation of mayoral appointment, Donald Barnes, Income Tax Review Board, filling of a vacancy expiring 12/31/15.
Move to approve the mayor's confirmation?
Second. Any discussion on the mayor's confirmation? For the clerk, please call the roll on the mayor's confirmation.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Okay, now introduction of visitors, sorry about that. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council? Yes, per se.
Hi, I am Jessica Ducko, member of Medina Chant, and I'm here to once again inform the public of our events that we are having on the square. Our first event is the talent show, and we are very excited for that. There are 26 very talented acts, which our participants, a few of them are actually standing in here today, and they age from 11 to 19, and our goal is actually to get kids out of the house and do something fun and bring families together, because that's something that we do not see a lot of in Medina, or in our nation, for a matter of fact, and that's a goal that we hope to achieve with some of our things that we're holding this summer. We have received many generous donations through our sponsors, and we would like to thank them as well. The event will be on Broadway from 6 to 8:00 PM this Saturday, June 15th, and we hope this first event will kickstart the Medina Chant organization. We hope that it will lead to many more exciting activities that will extend past this summer, too. So just to recap, the talent show is Saturday, June 15th, from 6 to 8, and we would like to thank our sponsors, Woodzies, TLG Activity Center, VAFT, and the Marco and Marco, along with Councilman Lamb, Councilman Hilbert, and Mayor Hanwell for helping us greatly with our organization. We encourage the public to attend, as it will be fun for people of all ages. Chant has the intention of making Medina an exciting place for all, and hopefully this Saturday, we will meet that goal. Thank you.
Thank you. With all your hard work and your members, I hope you have a great event on the 15th, and hopefully all of us can be able to attend that and partake in it, but thanks for all your efforts. Is anybody else that wishes to address council? Okay, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 95-13 and ordinance amending section 91704, the codified ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to water rates.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Colasar?
This ordinance we have in front of us is basically requesting a 3% increase in our water rates over the next five years. This recommendation, or this increase stem back from, I'll give you a little background, the City of Medina and the Engineering Department had a feasibility study, a water system study from a company called Arcatis, that recommended what we needed to do to keep our water supplier, water system, up and running at a reliable rate, and some projects, they pinpointed that they felt we needed to do. After meeting with Water and, Pat Patton, our City Engineer, went over this recommendation with our Water and Utilities Committee, and after that meeting, we had an additional one to have Pat come back and specify, you know, what are necessities, what, out of these projects that are recommended, what are the necessities the City of Medina needs to keep a reliable water system? And from that, Mr. Patton provided a five-year project plan for the needs that the system requires, and from that, we passed it on to our Utility Rate Review Committee to look at that, look at current revenue and expenditures, and come up with a recommendation to us on how we're going to succeed in paying for these projects in the future and maintaining a reliable water system. So the recommendation came from Utility Rate Review, came back through Water and Utilities, and then on to Finance, and this is for a 3% increase across the board each year for the next five years on our water rates. To me, I feel, one, we obviously have to maintain one of our most important assets in our community, and that's our water system. Our water accounts have run in the red practically every year, if you look back at least the last 10. The City of Medina switched over their water supply back in 2002, I believe, from Lake Medina to Avon Lake, and to be honest with you, the projections at that time were not as close as they needed to be, and we've been playing a lot of catch-up, and the account reflects that. I know there are some concerns about the rate increase over a five-year period continuous, and projects maybe getting built up, and maybe we're asking too much from our City Engineer to get these projects done in time, and then we'll have a cumulative additional funds we're not using. And it was brought up in Water and Utilities, I think in two of our meetings, and at Finance as well, and the administration has told us that they are going to stay online with the projects that are projected for the next five years to get each, and those projects are available on the city website. If you go, I believe, to Patrick Patton's department, you can see the five-year outlook on capital improvement projects, and it lists those precisely, and the administration has told us that they will complete those, but we still will review every year on our revenue and the amount of expenditures going out. So if there's a buildup, and if there is not a need for 3%, we're not going to increase it. So I want the constituents to know that, that we will be on the ball, keeping an eye on this, and we're not going to ask for more money than we need. And these projects that are pinpointed here are necessities that we need to keep a safe and reliable water system, and it's 3% across the board, even if you're a small end user to our largest end user. So I think it's fair, it's an opportunity to plan for the future, and I'll reiterate it again, to keep our water system up and running and safe and reliable, and so I will be supporting that, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion with respect to the water rates? Mr. Lamb?
No, you know, thank you, Mark, and I appreciate the way you explained it, I think it makes it clear for everybody that's listening or paying attention at home, and further, when you look at this, the 3%, I think it's reasonable, it's responsible, and also when you actually look at the dollars or the penny amount for the people using the very least amount of water, who typically may be the single elderly, older person in a home, that rate is still very low, and I think it's important that we keep an eye on that, but I appreciate the work that you've done, the committee, the Utility Rate Review Commission, to both ensure that the projects, you know, are moving forward, and that we are responsible with the rate adjustment, and not waiting, you know, until we're pretty far down the road and suddenly have to make a huge increase. So thanks for that.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? I would just have to say, I also would like to thank the committee and Mark's efforts in coming up with a solution, however, I won't be able to support the solution, because I kind of disagree with respect of five consecutive years of a 3% increase. I'm really not sure what the increase will be in the next few years, it could be more, it could be less, and I'd rather just wait on a year-to-year basis to make that determination, though I do agree that there's some type of increase that would have to occur every year, just to make sure that the cost of living adjustment and the expenses that are incurred in the Water Department are covered. But again, I just can't agree with the five-year fixed 3% for each year. Any other comments? For the clerk, please call the roll.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
No.
Ordinance 95-13 passes, six yeas, one nae.
Ordinance 96-13, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Medina County Board of Commissioners to provide fixed route public transportation services within the City of Medina for a period of January 1st, 2013, through December 31st, 2013.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion? Mayor Hanwell?
Thank you, Mr. President, this, the amount is $17,500, $11,250 of those dollars come from the CDBG grant that the city gets, and the other $6250 comes from the general fund. This will take us through the end of this year, and we'll be entering into discussions with the county commissioners shortly to talk about the 2014 rates.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment on ordinance 96-13? Please call the roll.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Ordinance 96-13 passes, 7-0.
Ordinance 97-13, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and to award a contract to the successful bidder for their historic district water line replacement.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergence clause has been requested, I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President, this project, as titled, will be the replacement of water lines over several blocks within the downtown area. It will be completed without any fees to any of the property owners, and we will convert their connections from the old line to the new line. We are asking for the emergency clause, because we'd like to get this started with hopes of getting completed prior to ODOT's resurfacing program, which is scheduled for a couple of state routes here this summer.
Thank you. Any further discussion? For the clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes, 7-0.
For the clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Ordinance 97-13 passes, 7-0.
Ordnance 98-13, an ordinance authorizing flight services of Medina to build 10 new hangars at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion? Mr. Huber?
The City of Medina has a lease with Medina Flight Services for operation of the airport, and pursuant to the terms of the lease, the operator needs to ask permission from the city if they wish to build any new hangars at the airport. Currently, there is a list of pilots who'd like to base new airplanes at the airport, it's an extensive list, and accordingly, Flight Services of Medina is requesting permission to build 10 new T-hangers at the airport, and accordingly, we need to pass an ordinance to approve it, so it's up to council to do that.
Just a quick question, do you know how the jet fuel sales are going, or where that stands, is there a good demand for that thus far?
We're just getting started, so I don't have a history that I can report at this point, but we do have the contract with the helicopter operation to use the jet fuel.
I was just wondering if this, the new hangars, I guess it's spurred by the fact that we have jet fuel at the airport.
Well, it is, both that and the infrastructure improvements in the last five years, we've developed an extensive list of pilots who want to base aircraft there.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Simpson?
Yeah, I would just like to comment that what Flight Services has provided for the airport and then returned to the City of Medina is unmeasurable of what's been accomplished in the last several years. We've got a roll, you know, we always talk about what a jewel we have with Spring Grove You know, we used to talk about what a jewel we have with Spring Grove Cemetery, but we do. Another jewel we have that a lot of people don't take advantage of and need to stop and visit and take an airplane ride is Medina Municipal Airport. And Mr. Olson's here tonight, and I thank you for your hard work, sir, and I'll be voting yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 98-13 passes 7-0.
Resolution 99-13, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for grant assistance from the Ohio Department of Development, Office of Housing and Community Partnerships for the Small Cities Community Development Black Grant Allocation Program for the fiscal year 2013.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, and I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Mr. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. For this year's annual CEBG allotment, the city's allocation will be $75,000. The city conducted public hearings on February 26th and May 22nd. We anticipate targeting funding for public transit, parks and rec facilities for the purchase of two security cameras for Ray Mallett Park, fair housing assistance and administration. And based on our submitted chip grant, if that is successful, we will be targeting funding for code enforcement assistance, and if that program is not funded, then we will be reallocating dollars for handicap parking spaces at the Medina Community Rec Center. And the emergency clause has been requested as the grant application is due to the state on June 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for those who are following along, I did not include in the critical infrastructure program because that was removed from the program.
Yes, we have found a couple of funding opportunities through the state for critical infrastructure, largely to target water lines within the lower income census tract. And they do have one program on a rolling cycle, and we may consider that in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the resolution or the emergency clause related to the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Any further discussion or resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the resolution?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Resolution 99-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 100-13, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and to award a contractor to successful bidder for the Fair Road Booster Pumping Station.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. The City of Medina's water system has three pump stations. Two of those have been either built or rebuilt within the last 10 years. The third is the Fair Road Booster Pumping Station, which remains pretty much as it was originally built back in 1960. This project will... We're reusing the building, so it's not a new building, but there will be new pumps, new motors, electro equipment and mechanical equipment to bring this into current standards.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 100-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 101-13, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contractor to successful bidder for the South Court Water Tank Improvement Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This project is a maintenance project for our South Court Water Tank. That's the half a million gallon water tank that services what we call our high-pressure district. An inspection a couple of years ago indicated that the interior coating needed to be replaced. This project will do that. And I should note with regards to our earlier discussion, both these projects, as well as the historic district water line project we talked about back in ordinance 97-13, were all part of that master plan study that we referenced. So we're starting to tick those projects off the list here.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Ordinance 102-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 103-13, an ordinance amending ordinance number 213-12, passed December 10th, 2012, amendments to the 2013 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are appropriations for the three water projects that we discussed, as well as the issue-two project that Ryan and Lafayette...
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 104-13 passes 7-0.
Council comments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Colasar.
I have one announcement to make in reference to each year, the City of Medina usually does a creek cleanup, usually Champion Creek. And actually, I think we've kind of changed it now. I think it's called the City of Medina Watershed Campaign.